Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Can we please rise for the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I'll open the meeting up to public comment. And just a quick comment, public comment on this front end is for agenda items only. So if you have any questions regarding the agenda, please stand, state your name, and shout out your question. So we'll open it up to public comment. Okay, we'll close public comment. And we'll go into our special presentations, the leaders of the pack. We'll call up the elementary school first.
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call up Jonathan Barone for our elementary school leader of the pack. Ms. Eckert and Ms. Elliott is now his classroom teacher. They said Jonathan possesses all the qualities of a true leader of the pack. We are so proud of Jonathan this year. In all he has accomplished and overcome, he stands out for his empathetic personality, exemplary work habits, determination and grit he shows each and every day in the classroom and around the school building. Even in the most atypical situations, we can count on Jonathan to do the right thing, set the best example and be our role model. His kindness, enthusiasm to learn and ability to always want to improve is truly remarkable. Ms. Bavinow says this award is so deserved. Jonathan is a deeply caring person. One day he came to me and asked me to please check on a fellow student. He thought his classmates looked frustrated and could use some encouragement. It was such a kind and thoughtful gesture. Ms. Knosis says Jonathan always comes to PE ready to learn and deeply enjoys the games we play. He exemplifies good sportsmanship and often helps the coaches demonstrate how to play the game. Ms. Gertler says he's an extremely hard worker who never gives up, even when the material is difficult for him. Jonathan approaches every task with determination and a positive attitude. He eagerly participates in class, asks thoughtful questions, and shows a genuine desire to improve. Jonathan's perseverance and drive are wonderful character traits that make him an excellent pick for leader of the pack.
One more official one.
Two more.
Oh, sorry.
And we're gonna make that one good because we're gonna save it for when you become superintendent for real.
Okay, our middle school.
We'd like to welcome Grace Lanigan, our leader of the pack in middle school. Grace is a seventh grader and her teachers have so many nice things to say about her that my font is like teeny tiny so I can fit it all into one paper. I'm gonna start with Mrs. Here. She says that Grace demonstrates a high level of work ethic and motivation every day. She pushes through difficult tasks. Grace is a friendly student who cares for her friends. She enjoys sharing her hobbies, especially about crafting and art. Grace takes pride in being independent and has matured as a student and a learner this year. Ms. Besko, your math teacher, says that Grace is dedicated to her schoolwork and makes sure to ask for help when she needs it. She's a caring and positive presence in class. Mr. Peterson says that Grace is a model student in the math classroom. She works hard, is a self-starter, and is not afraid to advocate for herself when she needs to, and is kind to others. She also has a great sense of humor, which I've come to appreciate this year. Keep up the great work. Ms. Ivins, your health teacher, says that Grace is an incredibly hard worker and an excellent classmate. She always puts in 110% of effort into everything she does. She's helpful, kind, and overall fantastic student and person. Mr. Giacomo says that Grace has a smile and a positive attitude. She works hard and is up for a challenge. I enjoy having Grace in my class. Dr. Harris said that Grace is kind, such as always saying hello to others, even younger students who she knows from other activities, and cleaning up even if the mess isn't hers. She is helpful and offers to carry things, set up equipment, and hold the door for her classmates in science. Mr. Banks, your tech teacher, says that Grace Lanigan is a fantastic young lady. He's also had the privilege of being your cross-country coach this year. He says that you are a very dedicated and hardworking athlete. Grace is never one to back down from a challenge when running and always gives 100%. She also brought a smile to practice and meet, and she's always working with her teammates as a team player. With all these fantastic qualities, I can't wait to teach Grace next year as an eighth grader in tech class and to be her coach again for cross-country. Mrs. Sunday says that Grace is a kind, thoughtful student with a strong work ethic in reading class. She's a great friend to her classmates and never shies away from a challenge. Keep up the great work. Mr. Rizzi, your band teacher, says that Grace is a respectful young lady who tries her best every day in seventh and eighth grade band. She has come a long way as a musician over the last few years and always maintains a positive attitude. She also goes out of her way to be helpful to me and others around her, especially when it comes to the organization of the percussion section. She's a great addition to the band and a pleasure to have in class. And then I had added something because Grace is a student of mine for many years. I said, I've had the privilege of knowing Grace since the early days of Zoom instruction and social distancing, and I've had the privilege of watching her grow through middle school. And throughout this time, she's consistently exemplified all the qualities of leader of the pack, something that was echoed by all the teachers who's worked with her. In addition, I want to especially highlight Grace's strong moral compass. She's always the first to stand up and speak out for others regardless of the situation, an admirable trait that reflects both courage and compassion. Congratulations, Grace. We're very proud of you.
And for the high school, we have Gunner Tometta. Very excited. Gunner just stumped us in his geography quiz during our civic showcase, which was pretty impressive. Some of those questions were really hard, but you know, we did our best. I'm not sure. I'm very good at geography anymore. So a few things about Gunner. Ms. Reshino, his PE teacher, said Gunner is a pleasure to have as an athlete and a student in physical education. He is willing to try everything and anything with a positive attitude. His effort is never anything less than 100%. He continues to be successful in class every day and may soon be named badminton champion for his class if he continues to excel. Mr. Early said Gunner is a very bright and polite young man. He is not only a great athlete and student, but he is also an amazing person. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time coaching Gunner, and I love now seeing him in the high school. Congrats, Gunner. You deserve this. Mr. Tatum, his English teacher, I was fortunate enough to have Gunner in class twice. He brings such a great attitude and energy to the room, always smiling, always engaged, willing to do whatever we are doing that day. He's one of the most genuine kids I've ever taught, comfortable in his own skin, not afraid to be himself. Gunner probably doesn't think of himself as a leader in the sense of that super vocal person who's going to command attention and delegate responsibility. But in terms of leadership, as consistently being kind and thoughtful, being a good friend and being courtesy and empathetic to everyone around him regardless of who's watching, to me, that's leadership, and that's Gunner. Ms. Saylor said Gunner is a no-nonsense kind of kid. He has a keen sense of humor and of right and wrong, and he is a leader who helps keep his kids honest. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, again, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, we congratulate our leaders of the pack. Job well done, guys. Our second present, special presentation this evening is Boy State. Our high school principal will now introduce those.
Sure.
Students will be recognized for New York State Boy State.
Good evening, everybody. This evening, we want to recognize and honor three young gentlemen. This evening, one of them could not attend. He is actually competing in a varsity boys' baseball game currently. But nonetheless, we would like to congratulate all three boys on being selected for Boy State. Just a brief background on Boy State. The American Legion Boy State is among the most respected and selective educational programs of government instruction for U.S. high school students, a program in which students become part of the operation of local, county, and state government. At Boy State, participants learn the rights, privileges, and responsibilities of active citizenship. The training centers on the structure of city, county, and state governments operated by students elected to various offices. Boy State activities include legislative sessions, court proceedings, law enforcement presentations, assemblies, bands, choruses, and recreational programs. So our local American Legion Post 193 annually selects students here at the high school, junior students, to attend this program. So this year, I have the privilege of recognizing three outstanding individuals who have been selected to attend, and they are Logan Carl. If we can get him. Daniel Hollowfield. And best but not least, who could not make it tonight, Connor Elliott. Congratulations to you guys on being chosen to participate in Boy State through the Legion. This is a remarkable achievement that reflects your outstanding leadership qualities and dedication to our school and community. Boy State provides an invaluable opportunity to engage with peers from different backgrounds, develop essential skills for leadership, and gain a deeper understanding of civic responsibility. Your selection is a testament to your character and potential to make a positive impact on our school and community beyond Highland High School. We're incredibly proud of you, as I'm sure your families are, and we look forward to seeing the contributions that you may have once you return. So congratulations to these three.
And then Mr. Opitz, if you could maybe tomorrow get all three of them together and get one with the other recipient, I think that would be, that would be pretty awesome.
Congratulations.
Guys, make sure you have those certificates tomorrow because he's gonna retake that picture.
Again, on behalf of the entire board, congratulations to those recipients of New York State or New York Boy State 2025. Achievement well-recognized. Congratulations. Okay, not sure if you want to stay for a budget presentation. I'm sure today was your first day back to class, so a lot of kids got a lot of work to catch up on. So you guys can go. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I usually sit in the front. I usually.
I think you have competition. I think Jonathan has.
Are you the golden girl?
Golden girls. Can't go wrong with the golden girls. Every single elementary student was like, who? Trust me. Actually, some of my staff even.
Our next presentation everybody's been waiting for are 2025-2026 budget presentations. We're on, Desmond.
Good evening, everybody. Before I begin, I'd like to say thank you to the superintendent for reviewing the presentation last on April 8th. It was a great presentation. You did a wonderful job. And for those who were concerned, I resolved my ticket by making a sizable contribution. While it didn't thank you, but thank you. So we'll begin tonight's presentation by going over what we're gonna present. We're gonna review the revenue budget. We'll talk about the review of the 25-26 expense budget. We'll talk about the contingency budget implication. We'll discuss the New York property tax report card. We'll kind of circle around with Proposition 1, which is the budget. Proposition 2 is the bus referendum. And finally, the budget calendar, which seems to be the same. So let's begin with the draft revenue, expense revenue. We've discussed this before. As you can see, the very first line indicates our state aid revenue of $20,646,175 in place upon the budget. Highland and other school districts have not, are still waiting for the legislative budget to be approved. And hopefully, hopefully, I said, hopefully, we will have an increase in our state aid. As you can also see on the screen, we have ERS reserves that we used. Last year, we had budgeted for 250, and this year, we're only selecting $74,347, a decrease of 175. However, right below that is a large increase in the tax cert. I'm not gonna try and say tax seori. Butchers that. For the tax cert reserve, we are using $376,000 to balance the budget. Finally, our tax levy is an increase of 2.63, which is $890,382. Questions? Comments? Okay. The next one slide shows you, the expenditure slide, shows expenses in the format similar to what the state aid format would look like and our audit. They're basically categorized into general support, construction, people transportation, community services, employee benefits, debt service, and interfront transfer. Once again, we can see, and we've gone through the previous presentations, we've gone through the general support. We talked about a $587,000 increase. We've got debt service, which we've discussed, $911,000. But at the bottom, the interfront transfer went down by $30,000. We believe that the food service department will be doing an excellent job next year, and the general fund will not have to make as big a large contribution as we would expect. I'm being conservative with the $30,000 because I know we are CEP, and I think that number will be a little bit higher, but I wanted to go conservatively with $30,000. That brings us down to our total expenditure increase of $2936,540. This brings us to our balance budget. We have $57,325,285 in revenue and $57,325,285 in expenditures. Questions? If we do not pass the budget, then we have to go to what's known as a contingency budget. A contingency budget, if proposed, if the proposed budget fails on May 40, a second budget vote can be held, which will be the third Tuesday in June, which would be the 17th of July.
June.
June, sorry, 17th of June. If a second proposed budget fails, we must adopt a contingency budget on July 1st. Under the contingency budget, the tax levy cannot be increased from the prior year. This would be a reduction of the $890,000 we talked about in the revenue for the proposed tax levy. This would have an impact upon the equipment that we're possibly purchasing, and we'd have to find additional reductions of $737,000 to identify so that we can meet that reduction in the tax levy amount. There'll be, no essential maintenance would be allowed. So Mr. Miller would probably be yelling at me. And once again, no community use of school facilities without charging a fee for the operational expenditures would be allowed. A contingency budget takes into consideration the minimum legal services required to A, maintain the occupational services, B, pay for debt service and our insurance, three, transportation costs, and finally, operations and maintenance of buildings. It reduces equipment. We'll have to find savings in equipment. We have certain student supplies or certain supplies that we'd probably have to reduce. And we just want to mention that salaries that are contingent upon bargaining units wouldn't be cut, but any other salary increases that were possibly in the budget would have to be removed. And there are none. So that would be your contingency budget. Any questions or comments? So if we do not, if this community does not approve it, then we go into the contingency budget. The next item we're gonna talk about very quickly is the property tax report card. Short and simple, this is, the property tax report card is something that the state requirement, is a state requirement that requires showing our reserves, our fund balance, and our appropriations. A little political back history, this was the governor's way to see how school districts, what fund balances they have, what reserves they have, and if they had to make cuts in their budget, then we kind of push it back to the school districts by saying, well, look, you've got enough reserves. So this is something that we have to always do. Here on the screen, it talks about the property tax report card includes the decrease in reserves, which we talked about before, the ERS and the tax cert. And the carryover encumbrances. Now, carryover encumbrances, our encumbrances refers to goods or services ordered in the current school year but have not been received or paid for within the last same year. The funds allocated for those expected invoices are transferred from the current school year, fiscal year, to the next school year. So basically, at the end of June 30th, some of the buildings ordered supplies, ordered goods, and they haven't come through yet. We haven't paid for them. They get moved over to the next year's budget. They get added to the next year's budget. And so that's what they're talking about reserve encumbrance, reserve for encumbrance. It's just moving the monies that you haven't spent in this year to the next year. Personally, I'm not a fan of the, because we, in my previous job, departments would move that money over and then think, oh, we've got a bigger budget, and then keep rolling that. So we do get to the end of the school year, we do talk to the principals and the assistant principals and tell them, we need to make sure that everything has been received so that way we do not have a large rollover. And so, once again, the state requires that we submit the property tax report card, which gives a breakdown of this. There is more detail showing what the property tax card does. I will explain a little further. The property tax report card then goes into what we consider more detail about our reserves. As we've talked about previously, the reserves, we talked about, show throughout the ERS reserves, which goes down by $74,000. Our TRS contribution, we have not touched that reserve. Of course, we're touching the tax reserve for $376,000, and all the other reserves are in place. Once again, using $450,000, $610,000 to balance the budget, we use part of our reserves. Now, just want to put it out there, these reserves might change based upon how we end the 24-25 school year. We are aggressively looking at all the expenses, making sure all the bills are paid, looking where we can find some things that we didn't have to pay. You would probably have a little bit of fund balance. I would not speculate to say what that number is right now, but once again, as we get closer to June, we will see a better idea of what our fund balance is. Once we have that number, we will meet with the financial committee and ask them, how would we like to distribute that reserve? Would you like to put it back into the ERS? Would you like to contribute more to the capital reserve? Would you like to put some more in perhaps the TRS or the tax cert reserve? Speaking of the tax cert reserve, we have $400,000 that's remaining balance. We do have two major cases that we have out there. One has been kind of resolved, I would say. We've got legal confirmation of the dollar amount, and we have enough to support that. It is being blended into two quarters of the, two years. It will happen for '25, '26, and then '26, '27. Rather than hitting the district with one large sum of money, we decided to bleed it out. That number is approximately $230,000, so $115 in one year and $115 in the second year. The second case has not been resolved yet, so we're still working on that, and we still have the tax reserve available. I also left a cushion in there, and I hate to use the word cushion, left a little bit of reserve in there so that way if we have other cases that come up, we have some type of base to support ourselves. And that's how we ended up with the $400,000. Questions on reserves? Comments?
Just quickly, by taking the $230 out of that projected 400 that's left, with the remaining amount, you feel comfortable with the one case that's out there?
Yes. That is a very, it's a small amount, but once again, we've got enough that we put to the side for other cases, and the $115 will pay out this year for '25, '26.
Oh, true.
And then '26, '27. So it's not gonna hit that reserve right away of $270,000. It will be actually blended into two components. There is a small piece that the library has to pay, but we'll build the receivable for them for that portion.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. So we get down to Proposition Number 1, for the board to approve tonight the budget vote for the $57,325 school budget. And we have already done the Proposition 2 for the bus referendum, which goes to $962,497. And that brings us to our calendar. I've highlighted in yellow today's date and the due date for what we have to do. As you can see, there says, DLE meeting, adopted budget, and tax report card bylaw must not be later than April 28th. So if it is approved tonight, which I hope it will be, I will send the property tax, tax report card to the state tomorrow morning, and then we will have that certified. I think at that point, we have, if there are no other questions.
Desmond, I have one question. I know we have until the 28th to adopt the budget. What happens if the state settles on a '26 budget before then and increases the state aid to the district? Are we gonna amend this prior to the vote, or we'll move it forward, and then after July 1, we do what we have to do with that additional money?
I would recommend going with your budget that's currently available, and then as of July 1, knowing that you've got additional revenue coming in, it will be presented when you do your financial statements, showing that you had a big increase in revenue. You will not touch, hopefully at that point, your reserves that you put out there, and they will stay whole. So rather than jogging back and forth and going to multiple meetings, which some school districts would like to do, I think that would be the most prudent thing to do.
No, I just wanted to throw it out to the board. Couldn't those additional funds also be applied to decrease the 2.63 levy impact?
No. So your tax levy is set. It's been established as, that's what we calculated and we sent to the state. So that's the tax levy that we'll actually put out there with our tax cert. It wouldn't really decrease that, and I'm not sure if you'd rather do that. I'd rather you put the money in your reserves, hold that in fund balance, rather than adjusting your tax levy calculation. So the superintendent and I have to do the video shoot for the presentation. We have that almost prepared and almost done, getting the verbiage down. In that presentation, it does talk about how much it will cost the community per $100,000 of what they have in terms of taxes. We'll give that breakdown in that presentation. I can probably, if, once the superintendent and I have reviewed it, we can probably let you give it out to you so you can have a review before you talk to that presentation.
Are you honestly expecting the state to have a budget in the next few weeks?
I don't think so.
Right.
So it doesn't seem to be any indication right now.
I'm prepared to motion to, this is a good budget. We've done a lot of good work here. I'm going to pull it out of our consent agenda and vote on that budget.
I'm going to pull it out of our consent agenda and vote on that budget, because I think that's the way we should represent the community. So we'll put it, pull it out of our consensus and vote on it, uh, as a, uh, one line item.
Thank you, bud.
Any other questions for Desmond?
Thank you.
And again, uh, I want to thank, uh, Desmond and superintendent and the entire administrative team for all the work they put to bring this, uh, budget forward to us. And again, like I said at the last meeting, uh, this year, we're presenting a budget with no impact on student programs.
Like we did before that.
Okay. We'll move to our consent items, uh, E, A, one, two, D, and...
D three.
D three. We're going to pull four and have a separate, uh, resolution to vote on for the budget proposition. Okay, like, normal, if you have any questions, you want to pull an item out and vote on it separate, you need any clarification, you want to have any discussion, any consent item, we can do that right now.
Yeah, I, I do want to pull out one of those, it's under the probationary, maintenance worker two.
Okay.
So, you know, understanding personnel's confidential, just looking at some of the information, uh, it's a close to top step higher and... I, I couldn't get there on my cap, that's all, I'm sorry.
I, I think, yeah, myself reading into it, I believe, uh, we've been two years without replacing that position. And I think a good, my understanding and being on the support service, I think a good, um, part of the building maintenance workers nowadays in, in our district are, uh, for the most part, working on our infrastructure, our HVAC systems, uh, or our mechanical systems. It's not so much of, you know, replacing a door hardware, the mechanical systems. And I think what I read into it, the background that this individual has, I think is a, will be a, a, an asset to, to distribute, because that's a big part of what those individuals in that department work on, on a, sometimes a daily basis, is, is the mechanical infrastructure. That's, that's me looking at it. I, I understand, Mike, your concern on the, uh, the grade and the step, uh, that might be something...
There's nothing...
Go into executive session, have a discussion on it.
I don't think it's necessary, so long as this is...
If, if, what you're saying, the skill set fits in with those terms, that, that monitoring and making HVAC systems, that...
I think the biggest part was the HVAC, and we've got so much HVAC coming on board with the air conditioning that's going in.
What's the hours, what's the shift hours in this position? Mr. Miller? What is it?
Seventy-three.
Yeah, this individual has that skill set, I can say, because I'm working with that on a daily basis, and, uh, this is a, this is a good...
Excellent. Let's just pull it out and we'll move forward, this should be just fine.
You, you want to pull it out?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, anybody else have any questions, concerns? So under probationary four, uh, the building maintenance worker two, we'll pull that out and have a separate, uh, vote. If there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept our consent items with the exception of number four and, uh, pulling out under probationary, the building maintenance worker two. We have a motion, motion by Heather, second by Tom. All those in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? So carried. Uh, entertain a motion, uh, under probationary, uh, to move forward the building maintenance, be resolved, the Board of Education, under recommendation superintendent approves the following probationary appointment as presented to the board at this meeting. Nicholas Chrome, Chrome, position building maintenance worker two, salary grade fifteen, step thirteen, sixty thousand, six fifty-nine, prorated, effective May twelfth, twenty twenty-five, probationary period, May twelfth, twenty twenty-five to May twelfth, twenty twenty-six, and the purpose is to repla- replace David Doyle, who retired. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, second by Jen. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions, one, no? No abstentions, so it's a six-one vote. Okay, um, under our budget proposition, property tax report card for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year be resolved, Highland Central School District adopts the proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school budget in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, three hundred, fifty-seven million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars to present to the voters at the annual meeting on May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and approves the following proposition. Shall the Board of Education of the Highland Central School District be authorized to expend the budgetary purposes in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year the sum of fifty-seven million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars, and to levy the necessary tax thereof? Be further resolved that the Highland Central School District Board of Education approves the property tax report card and authorizes the submission of the, to the State Education Department. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, second by Janine. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on, under curriculum and instruction, our monthly principal report. Elementary school.
Once in a while. Um, just, uh, two things that I really would like to, I guess, highlight, kind of. Um, one is a driver, um, and I don't know how long he's been with Kathy, Ja- uh, his name is Javis Burke. Uh, he is, every day goes above and beyond, but the other day I caught him in our building, and I was like, why, Javis, why are you here? And he was bringing Happy Meals to kids for doing the right thing on the bus, so like, they were doing positive stuff, and he, they can earn points and they can buy certain things from his thing, which he tried sneaking in, and he wasn't trying to cause any publicity or anything like that, and I caught him ahead of time, so I didn't even know he was doing this for a while. So that's how, like, speaks to his character, and how such a great person. So I just wanted to highlight him, just because he's, goes that extra mile. Um, the other thing is, if I can get the pictures up, um, it's kind of more of a long, long, like, shout-out, I guess, would be the best way, because it's been, the Clink Fund has, obviously, everyone knows Clink, Clink, Clink. So what we finally have done is gotten money so we could purchase a book vending machine. So it's not just like an elementary school, but it's all the community that, and, um, Mr. Freer, who has squirreled away money for all his time there, and I actually got able to use...
From cans.
Yes.
From Clink.
Right, so I dipped into some of his, his savings.
Not my savings, it's the school's savings.
Um, and so we did a quick... Let me get the pictures up. So here's our book vending machine. And then...
It's empty.
Like me.
Um, and then we had huskies, and, uh, here's the other side, so. All lit up and everything. There are no books in it yet, there are no books in it yet. Um, they are on their way. Uh, the PTA is supplying all the bu- books for us, and the kids get these, like, um, golden coins that they can put in there for positive behavior, and, um, you know, some, some highlighting success throughout the building, so. They'll, it has different grade levels for different sized books and so on and so forth, so it's, um, yeah, it's pretty cool, so.
Hardware, yeah?
Yeah.
So who repairs that, the maintenance team?
We, uh...
Being certified.
We got a five-year, we talked to Spack and Kill, because they have one as well, and they told us what package of, uh, of, uh, warranty to go with, and so they didn't really have many issues, but they said...
Did I expect there's going to be some curious guy sticking in?
Uh, do you guys have any other questions?
Thank you, Andy.
All right, uh, just one quick update for everybody. So, uh, today, actually, we did our, at the middle, we did our nice slot testing. So Mr. Stacy, um, and Ms. Lomenthal from the elementary school teamed up, which they do every year, to do, um, the testing for our few students, we don't have too many who need the nice slot testing, which is, um, state test for English language learners, so that they do every year, so. That is my only update to my report, so if we have any questions? Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. Um, one brief update, uh, tomorrow, we actually are partnering up with Ulster County Stop D, Stop D W I program through the probation. Um, they present a, um, education prevention on D W I. Um, it's more fitting, you know, we have prom coming up on May second, you know, it's a good time of year to be proactive in that manner. They come during our lunch periods and set up a simulator and have, uh, volunteers from their department to talk with the kids, um, and share some available resources. Additionally, we are working closely with Pete Miller. Um, um, from his side of things, uh, through the Highland Fire, Towne Lloyd Police Department, to put on our bi-annual, uh, mock car crash out front, so that'll be on May second, the day of the prom, uh, where we simulate a real-life, uh, car accident scene and run through the motions of having, uh, local emergency responders responding. And also, again, just in, uh, in prevention, uh, for that type of risky behavior, so. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we do have our, uh, directors here this evening, I don't believe we have athletics, because I believe they have a baseball game.
And tech.
And tech, what would be here? So we do have our directors, so if you have any questions for them, shout them out, and make sure they'll address it.
They were good reports, happy to hear that the outdoor facilities are being used over there. Those bathrooms are running and, uh, haven't had a chance to walk over there, obviously, you know, over the winter, but it does look good and just good to see.
Speaking of outdoor facilities, is our, um, learning pavilion at the elementary school, uh, able to accept students at this point? Have we got, is that being utilized yet, and now the what, nice weather is coming forward, or you're planning on it?
There's kids in it.
Good answer.
We've been using it.
All right.
No more on trains.
I believe the, was it the Educational Foundation provided some furniture for that? Good.
That's not here yet. That still needs, it's still on the, the docket to be ordered.
Right. All right, anybody else have any questions for our directors? All right, thank you, guys. We'll go to our student rep.
So before I start, another thing about the elementary school, Javis is also my bus driver, and he is the best, he's like the nicest guy ever. And that's not the only reward that he gives students, he has like a bucket full of like toys and stuff at the front of us that they can get, that elementary students can get, works for good behavior, so. Um, at the elementary school, Mrs. Hoppers' first grade art class had a special guest. Parent and arts teacher in the Fallsburg School District, Susan Urban, collaborated with the class to bring their husky drawings to life. They created handmade stuffed animals inspired by the drawings that they made using details from the stories that the students wrote. In the fourth and fifth grade classes, Tanya Buchanan and other IBM employees visited in honor of Engineers Week. They taught the students about what engineers do every day and how important they are to society, and it helped the students participate in a collaborative and interactive STEM activity. At the middle school, the science elective classes have been working on many outdoor activities. Mr. Weaver's class built a towering bridge over the creek at the middle school. The project helped teach the students how to safely use simple tools. And Dr. Lewis's class finished their maple syrup unit not too long ago. They collected and boiled tree sap to make maple syrup, and even hosted the elementary school students to choose them by the process. Um, modified sorts, sports are off to a great start to what will be a great season. Over a hundred middle school students are participating in sports like basketball, baseball, softball, and boys and girls, lacrosse, and track and field. This Friday, the twenty-fifth, is another dance at the middle school. The HMS Spring Dance will give students the option to dance and listen to music in the cafeteria or an open gym to play games with their friends. All the dances have been fun for the students and very well attended, and this one doesn't seem like it would be any different. At the high school, on April third, the high school's music department put on an amazing concert called the Cabaret. It was a huge success, students in the chorus and band programs had to audition for spots in the concert, and it was organized by teachers, Mrs. Matthews, who teaches chorus, and Mr. Shaw, who teaches band, along with student, band student Nger Enday. A special thank you goes out to Lori in the Food Services Department, who made all the desserts for the event, and I was told they were very good. Um, Kayla Santiago in Mrs. Sailor's Citizenship and Action Class organized a field trip to the Met, the Metropolitan Museum of Art, open to all grade levels on March twentieth. Her capstone project was focused on showcasing the importance of art in art history and education. Students were able to go into the city, explore the museum on their own, and experience life from another time through the art. The National Spanish Honor Society went on a field trip to Mountain View Mexican restaurant on Tuesday, you're booking. They enjoyed a buffet-style lunch with traditional Mexican cuisine. Mrs. Gerard, the library media specialist, and Mrs. Stacy, an English as a New Language teacher, participated in a course for ENL teachers last year. They created a project with their middle school English language learners to translate book previews and assess what books they'd like to read in the library. They then planned a trip to the public library and helped students in getting their first library cards. And this trip was so successful that they decided to do it this year at the high school as well. And instead of going to the library, they went to Barnes and Nobles in Poughkeepsie to purchase books that students wanted to see in the library. The Highland, uh, the high school cheerleaders funded this field trip with a hundred dol- five hundred dollars, and the English language learners and cheerleaders found a lot of books, games, and puzzles that will be used to enrich everyone's experience in the library. The ELL students also used the trip, this trip, as an opportunity to practice their English skills in real-life scenarios. Um, the senior Disney trip is happening this weekend, they're leaving on Friday and returning next Tuesday. The seniors are really excited to visit the parks, including Animal Kingdom, Magic Kingdom, Hollywood Studios, and the water park in Epcot. They'll stay at the All-Star Sports Resort and will definitely enjoy their last big field trip of their school careers. Um, and lastly, spring sports are in full swing. Flag football won their first win for the program against Mckipsey in March. Track and field, lacrosse, softball, and baseball have all had strong starts to their seasons.
Any questions, Ara? No questions, just a comment, I did attend Foreign Language night and see our student rep, an expert crepe maker is what I saw. So I want to thank her for her participation, and I did share that with the boards.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, if you, you were making crepes, so your language is French, then? Can we get part of our presentation next meeting in French?
I could try.
That'd be great.
Very good. Okay, we'll, uh, we'll move on. Move on to our, uh, Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Zimmer.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, because of spring break, we only had three school days between our last board meeting and today, so I don't have too much to report on. I will reiterate for the board and for the public, um, some information about our UPK program. The Highland Central School District will continue its UPK program for the next school year, twenty-five, twenty-six school year, with applications for the lottery being currently accepted. There are forty-eight spots subject to the final year state budget. Placement is determined by lottery, not first come, first served. Applications for the lottery close Friday, May second. The online application and FAQs are available on the district website and on the district's Facebook page. Lottery will be held in early May, and families will be notified by email whether their child was selected or placed on the waitlist. Eligible children must reside in the Highland Central School District and turn four years old on or before December first, twenty twenty-five. If anybody has any questions, please email Carly Jacobson or myself, William Zimmer, at the district office. And for your information, as of today, we have had sixty-seven applications submitted.
Any questions for Mr. Zimmer? That's a few more than last year, right?
Yeah, there's a few more than last year, yeah. Uh, last year, we had just about fifty-eight, fifty-nine applications, so a few more. According to my calculations, COVID children are right, uh, right around the age to start school. Twenty-twenty.
Good observation.
Might be a few more still, even a week and a half with it, with it opens up. We'll see.
Okay, uh, Dr. Boyd?
Um, so we posted our Director of P P S, uh, position. We had twenty-one applicants, uh, so all the applications were first, uh, reviewed to make sure that, uh, the candidates had the qualifications that we were looking for. Uh, at the end of this week, we'll be in the first round of screening, uh, and then an in-person committee interview next week, um, as we move forward in the process to find, uh, to fulfill that position. The Ulster County Department of Health has been looking at trying to host more events in the southern part of the county. A lot of the events all focus around the Kingston area. Um, so they've been looking at trying to spread to other parts of the county. Uh, so we worked with Katrina Williams and we're gonna be hosting, um, well, they're gonna be hosting an event with the National Alliance on Mental Illness at the American Legion in Highland on May 5th, uh, from 5:30 to 7:30. Uh, they're gonna be looking at and teaching people about warning signs of mental health conditions, suicide, and the steps to take if you observe family members exhibiting those symptoms. Uh, the event will be from 5:30 to 7:30, as I said, on May 5th, and they will be serving pizza as well. So we'll be helping, uh, publicize the event for them. Uh, and it's nice to see that they are looking at the southern part of the county to try to, to spread the awareness on this and looking at, um, pushing out those events. So we were happy to, to do that. Uh, and lastly, I know at the last meeting, you know, I thanked all the staff for their flexibility, uh, in getting all the meetings, um, scheduled and completed, but I just have to highlight two-hundred-and-sixty-nine meetings held, uh, in this last, uh, between our board meetings. Uh, so just again, a big shout out to all of our staff. Uh, that takes a lot of coordination, um, to make those meaningful, um, meetings happen and to go off without a hitch. So again, big shout out to everybody and a big thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Boyd?
Dr. Boyd, you mentioned twenty-one applicants, but how many were actually, were they all qualified?
Uh, the majority, yes.
Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Boyd. And now our superintendent.
Okay, so following up, um, uh, from our last board meeting, uh, I did reach out to Town Supervisor Dave Plavcek regarding the proposed pet crematorium that's, uh, scheduled to possibly be near our elementary school. He confirmed to me that there have been no approvals made at this time. Additionally, Dave Barton, the Director of Building, Planning, and Zoning, provided some materials for us to, to look at here in the district. And, uh, he, he also indicated that the town is thoroughly reviewing the proposal. Um, it should be, uh, noted that the school district does not control zoning decisions in the town of Lloyd, but we are aware that there are community concerns about the proximity of this proposed location to our elementary school. And, uh, what I would do is I would encourage folks to attend the Town of Lloyd Planning Board Meeting this Thursday, April 24th, 7:00 PM, at the Town Hall, to share their perspectives. And, um, you know, the, the town has been very forthcoming with the information, and, uh, they're doing their due diligence as far as I can tell. So, um, I wanted to just follow up on that from last meeting.
What's the date of that again?
This Thursday, April 24th.
What information was forwarded, Joel?
So there was information about the incineration materials. I forwarded all to the board in the last, uh, Friday update. So if you take a look at it, it's, uh, it's all of the materials that were available, I guess, at the last session, so it's nothing new.
Thank you, I haven't.
But it's particulants, and I mean, it's very scientific.
Details, good.
So.
So location and proximity to the elementary school is, just to spell that again?
Nine W, right down the, the hill from, I think there was a dental office or something down there.
It's an adjacent property. And it sits below the elementary school.
To, to south of Sawyer Savins, yes.
So their, their vet stacks will waft up to the elementary school. They're ready to have the potential to.
It could.
So, so this Thursday, if anyone's interested, April 24th, 7:00 PM at Town Hall. And then just to reiterate some things that I mentioned at the last meeting, again, another shout out to our Ed, Educational Foundation. They're doing great things for our district. They're looking to help furnish, uh, the pavilion at the elementary school. They did, they donated money for that last year, so that's up and, and getting started. They also are fundraising for materials for our concession stand, so thank you to them. Their annual dinner is coming up on Friday, May 9th, 6 to 10:00 PM at Indian Ridge. Again, those tickets are $65. You can call Becky Ock Moody if you're interested, eight-four-five-two-three-four, fifteen-twenty-two. And our poster is still over here. These are the three individuals who will be honored at that dinner. Uh, with the return of two snow days over the break, we really got very close on the one. I didn't realize that we would have snow on April, what was it, 12th, 13th? You were probably already gone, right? Um, but I guess last Saturday there was snow. I was in the south, so, uh, I only saw what was on the Weather Channel. I was quite, uh, you know, interested in that. But, so we have, uh, returned two of the snow days to the calendar. We have two more to return, assuming there are no more snow days. Those will be on Friday, May 23rd and Tuesday, May 27th. Those will change if any more snow comes. Let's hope that that doesn't happen. As Desmond mentioned earlier, we'll be filming the budget video, uh, starting this week and running into next week with the help of Jess Murray, uh, from Ulster Boses. Um, I also, I want to thank, uh, Tom Miller and Bill Zimmer for attending the U X P A meeting, uh, Thursday before the vacation, uh, on April 11th. Uh, that's the night that it's held at the restaurant, uh, at Ulster Boses. Our students get to, uh, showcase their, their talents and, uh, they go over the budget. So, uh, thank you for doing that. Um, this Thursday, April 24th, it's gonna be quite a busy day. I have Mid-Hudson Catskill Council of School Superintendents meeting during the day, where I hope to, uh, speak with other superintendents about the state of our budget and whatever advocacy we can do, uh, as a, as a poor county region to encourage legislators to push that, uh, state budget through a little bit more quickly so that, uh, we know what's going on here in the district. Then Thursday evening, I'll be at Marish University at their Teacher Advisory Board. That's a meeting that happens twice per year, so we'll be attending that. And then, uh, on Friday, April 25th, at 1 o'clock, we have a Support Services meeting, and, uh, we'll be going over the status of where we are with all of our building project items. So, um, if you did walk in, uh, the doors today, you might have noticed there are no birds uh, in the, uh, the vestibule or whatever canopy. Um, so that has been addressed. Let's hope the birds were a little confused this morning. I did see them out, Mr. Miller and I were out there, and I'm like, they're still bringing sticks, thinking they're gonna build nests. They were bringing them to the top of the, to the, uh, um, to the canopy, but they weren't able to get into the, to the underneath section. So, um, they did that work over the spring break, so it looks good. And then our guys were out there today cleaning up the mess that the birds have. Hopefully, the bird, birds will now go away and find a home, like in a tree or something. But, um, it's a long time coming.
No protection in a tree, though. Protection in a canopy.
I know. Since I became superintendent, all I'm talking about is this canopy. I want the birds to go away from the canopy, and I want the canopy laid to rest. So that's the goal. All right, any questions?
As Joel mentioned, we have a Support Service meeting on Friday at, at 1:00 PM. So if anyone has any, any concerns regarding the, uh, current capital project and, and status, you know, feedback, and then we'll make sure we bring it to the Support Service meeting and get some answers from our design team, uh, on Friday. So if you have anything, just let me, Tom, or Ed know, and we'll bring that forward at the meeting. Just a quick, and I know there's, there's talk and possibly concerns. I'm not sure if the entire public, our, our school community is aware of that crematory, but, um, I think there's some false information going out there that's not totally accurate as far as, you know, the distance from the elementary school to the, to the proposed site. I don't believe it's, uh, a hundred feet or less. I think it's more than that. We do have fresh air intakes. I don't think, uh, this facility will, uh, compromise those fresh air intakes. It is highly regu, regulated. If you've read your backup material, it's highly regulated by, I believe, the E C oversees that. Uh, so, you know, if there's any concerns, if it does come to fruition, that we can contact the E C and they'll be, they'll jump on in a heartbeat, because I know how the E C operates. So, uh, I don't think there should be any concerns to our school community in the elementary school. But if you want to attend, uh, Thursday night at 7:00 PM at the Town Hall, uh, welcome to do it. Uh, I might, I might be there. All right. Any other questions with the superintendent's, uh, comments? Okay, uh, let's move on. Board of Education, new business. We have our Boses Administrative Budget Vote. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon a recommendation of superintendent, approved the Ulster County Board of Cooperative Educational Services Administrative Budget that has been presented to the Board for the 2025, 2026 school year in the amount of $7,283,083. That is, we want, want a propositive motion. Motion by Tom, second by Mike. Any discussion?
They usually come down and talk about their budget plan.
Yes.
Is this the first year that they do?
We haven't heard about an update on the, uh, I park 87 either.
Right.
So last year, there was a video that they showed at the U X P A dinner. I don't know if that was shown this year, but I did not get a copy of that video.
Yes.
I mean, I, you know, I did take a look at the.
I did get a copy, they showed the video, though.
I did take a look at the admin budget. I mean, it's a very modest budget. So I, I certainly support moving forward.
Yeah, I'm just interested, it just seems like a decrease in information, and we still have the questions out there about the I park, so.
I can invite Dr. Schenker to come to a future meeting, absolutely.
I'd like to hear an update on the I park 87 project, because I think they're supposed to occupy September.
September.
I don't know, you know, if that's happening.
Go even further back, we had increased the budget for capital projects at the Kings, uh, over in, uh, Fort Ewen, at Fort Ewen Facility, and then the I park came in on the tail end of that. So I would definitely like to hear an update from.
On both ends.
There was the capital project for Fort Ewen, and then they had extra money to do the I park, and then, again, I fully support Boses, I think it's a wonderful program. But all of these additional projects, and we're not getting updates, and I'd love to see where.
It's the positive stuff, right? You hear good updates and what's going on.
I believe our lease agreement with the I park eighty, I 87 project, I park 87, Desmond, was included in this budget go-around, the sixty-three thousand, whatever it was for the, for the lease agreement. I mean, if they're not moving forward in September, and, you know, why are we paying because it was supposed to be?
So we toured as superintendents a few weeks back, and I've been through a capital project now, so I can see how quickly things get together. But it's one of those moments, you walk in, you're like, how is this going to get done? But they have, they, they're gonna work triple shifts, I guess. Um, and they indicated that there's no concern about it getting done. That's what we were told.
You know, that old saying, silence is golden.
Yeah.
I don't think it's golden right now.
I will invite him to a future meeting, sure.
Love to hear.
All right, um, we have a motion on the floor by Tom and Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Carried?
I was enough.
You're enough? Okay. Boses, but ballot for election. You have a ballot in front of you. Uh, we're voting on two open seats, uh, seat one, seat two, one for New Pults. We're, it's a three-year term, July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2028. And that's, I believe it's currently held by Barbara Powell, Harrell. Uh, she's up for reelection. Seat two is, uh, Roundout Valley, three-year term, again, same duration. Uh, I'm not sure if Lucy Van Sickle is an incumbent or is she a new?
And I believe she's been on there.
Okay. So you got the ballot in front of you, you gotta vote for, uh,
She's representing.
Those two, and then for seat three and four are both at-large seats. All right, there's four candidates running for two at-large seats, so you gotta vote for only two. And then we'll pass this back on to Lisa, and she'll send it on to Boses.
So actually, what we're gonna do is you're going to send it to me, and then with the, the highest number, we're gonna put in a resolution.
Okay.
And then you'll do the resolution.
Okay.
Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the bios? Does anyone need the bios?
So I'll leave it out, and then Heather is going to do the tally, and then at that point, we can put the names in the resolution.
Okay.
Okay.
You vote for four?
Only two on the bottom. This is one of the first things that we've had.
Is this whole, is that?
No.
Oh, yeah.
That was different.
It's missing the bottom.
Here.
Something happened to that one.
Do you still need it?
I don't know who's wrote that one.
No, I, yeah, so this was, so, yeah.
Is that yours?
No, it wasn't mine, but it was. But the book's still the fourth, five.
I'm sorry, Heather, I was gonna read out the names so you didn't have to.
I know, and then your server passed me papers, so.
Well, they have to go to me. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, I thought you wanted me to tally them.
Yes, I was gonna read out the names to make it easier for you. Okay, now that you've got it. Works. All right, thanks. So you got your, okay. Is that everybody? Okay, so they, you're gonna put the name in the resolution then, Alan, Willie, Bruce?
Willie?
And David Thompson.
I think according to the at-large, you have to give.
Get, yeah, so.
Willie Bruce?
Yeah, there's two with the, with four.
Yeah. I mean, we don't.
Two is high, too high.
So it's Willie Bruce, David Thompson.
And they both same amount?
Yeah.
Because I think those tallies get added to the others, and the one-year term goes to the other two.
But the rest of the votes come from the rest of the component of the district.
Oh, we only go in one vote.
You're only voting for two overall candidates here tonight.
Yeah, but that counts as one vote, not.
Correct. Our district counts as one vote.
I overestimated our importance.
Okay, uh, Boses ballot for election, be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, recommend the election of the following candidate to serve on the Board of Cooperative Educational Services. Seat one, New Pults, Barbara Cow, Harrell. Seat two, Roundout Valley, Lucy Van Sickle. Seat three and four, at-large, Willie Bruce Jr. and David Thompson. Have a motion, please. Motion by Ed?
Second.
Second by Mike? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? So carried? All right, uh, anything under old business? Anything for the good and welfare of the district? We'll open the meeting up to public comment.
Slow down now.
I, I can just add one more thing, and just a reminder, our next board meeting will also be our community forum for the budget. And again, start at 6:00 PM. We can move it to the cafeteria, we've done that in the past, or we can post it here.
Will our budget newsletter be out prior to that?
It cannot be. It can go out the day of the forum. I checked on that today. It can be printed, it just can't be in the hands until we do the forum. I didn't know that until today. But our budget newsletter is in the process of being completed. until today. But our budget newsletter is in the process of being completed. So, yeah.
Whatever it is.
And actually, Lindsey actually asked, called and asked, when do we get it out? And then when I checked with Boses, they said.
No, I, I appreciate the announcement. We want the public to ask as many questions as possible.
Absolutely.
That's May 6th?
May 6th.
So we'll be in the cafeteria or in the boardroom? What did you decide?
Normally don't have a large showing in the past.
I'd say we can have it here.
Yeah.
We haven't had any.
There's no other student recognitions that evening?
Not that night. And I think we, we get a cleaner video from in here.
Sure, understood.
We can bring in twenty-three people in here. So we should be all right. All right. And then just one quick reminder that, um, we view, um, the contract extensions, extensions for certain employees because we'll have an executive session at our next board meeting. We do have that, uh, May 6th.
And that'll happen after the meeting.
Executive session, that's fine. Yeah. All right.
Would that be before or after the meeting?
It'll be after the meeting.
After.
Okay, anything else for good and welfare of the district? We opened it up, public comment. Nobody has public comment. We'll close public comment, and I'll need a motion for Jen. Motion by Jen, second by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. So carry. Thank you, everyone.